Good evening, everybody. Sorry for the delay. Ellie, roll call, please.
Trustee McAvoy.
President.
Trustee Wells.
Here.
Trustee Lawson.
Here.
Vice President Marcus.
Here.
President Diaz-Locum.
Here. Welcome, everybody. Thank you for coming to our meeting this evening. If you'd like to speak to the board, please do fill out a card. If you're at home, please complete or sign up on Google Docs and we will call you accordingly. Please turn off your cellphone so we can get this moving. If you need translation, translation is available. Si necesitas traducción, tenemos traducción aquí para usted. And that, do we have any changes to the agenda this evening?
I'd say we move 9.7 to 9.13, which are all the second readings. Yeah, which are all the second readings from the policy that we had a light discussion at best at the first reading.
Okay. So it's 9.7, 9.8, 9.9, 10, 11, 9.12, and 13, all to consent. Anything else? No, okay. Can I have a motion? Oh, wait a minute. There's one more item. I'd like to add item 5.1. And that would be community recognition or staff recognition.
Yeah, you can make it.
Yes, staff recognition. And there was one more item, right, John? What number was that?
And for the for the consent item under the chief business official to move to the form. So that would be 8.4. That's 8.4, and if you could move 8.4 to right after oral communication.
Right after 5.1?
Correct.
Okay. Any other changes you'd like to make this evening? No? Okay, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Ellie.
Trustee McAvoy.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Lawson.
Aye.
Vice President Marcus.
Aye.
President Diaz-Locum.
Aye. And do we have any oral communication this evening, Ellie?
We do not.
Great. Okay, moving right on to 5.1, I would like to say welcome to the children that are here present this evening. It's great to see children in the boardroom once again. Thank you for coming today. And okay, so Dr. Baker, if you could take up 5.1?
I will certainly do so. Thank you so much. And welcome, board members, and those community members that are also on the call this evening. To begin with, I'd want to thank, you know, HR and the interview panel who did such diligent work in getting us excellent candidates, number one, to interview. Thank you, Wendy. And number two, for the interview team, and I know a lot of you play parts on the interview team. And thank you so much for doing so. And so tonight, I'd like to introduce Melissa Bowden. And she is our new principal at Roy Cloud, who will begin in July, but she actually was introduced to the Roy Cloud staff yesterday. And will be introduced to the parent community on Friday morning. So Melissa, she comes to us with a wealth of experience, which I'd like to share with you. And I know you've already read the information that we sent out to the community, but at this point in time, she is the principal of the lower school in Woodside. She's been a seventh grade dean of students. She's also been a middle school athletic director. She's taught fourth grade, and she's also taught first grade. The other things that are quite impressive is she not only has an elementary, a multiple subject credential, I should say, allows her to teach from, you know, kindergarten through eighth grade, but she also has an authorization to teach in the middle school seventh grade science. So she brings a lot of expertise with her. So I'm really pleased to introduce her to you this evening. And welcome to the administrative team.
Thank you so much. Yeah, it's a pleasure to be here with you all tonight. And I just wanted to spend a moment of your time just kind of outlining, outlaying a little bit more of my background and what I hope to bring to the Redwood City School District and to Roy Cloud. So as Dr. Baker said, I come to you with 16 years of experience in education. I spent six of those years, I'm sorry, seven of those years in first grade, two of those years in fourth grade, and then the remaining, was that five? In middle school science, taught all through six, seven, eight. And in that time, I was the athletic director. I was also our school's design thinking lead, which is like a maker space. So I led that program. And I really, I started my admin journey early. I had always been a teacher leader, a new teacher mentor. But that passion really ignited a few years ago when I was hired as the instructional coach for Big Lift here in Redwood City. And that program and that experience completely changed my life and kind of sealed the deal for me wanting to hopefully end up in Redwood City permanently. So here I am, and I'm just so grateful and thankful for this opportunity. Um, let's see. So my personal background as well, I'm a Bay Area native. And I just recently moved to Redwood City with my partner and his two boys. And so I'm local as well and very excited about that. I just wanted to go over a few things of what I plan to bring to the table as I, as I joined the Roy Cloud team. I, I plan to work really hard for Roy Cloud and for the district. I want to work with all stakeholders. I'm big on collaboration. I want to listen, observe, and I plan, plan to learn really quickly. I value everyone's voice and perspective. I'll be understanding and empathic. I'm very student centered. I bring clear, transparent, and direct communication. And I plan to honor and respect the work that's come before me and work to support us all as we build our plans for the future. And then some, some traits that you can hold me to is I plan to be visible, reliable, supportive. I, I enjoy interacting with the entire community as much as I can before school, after school, during school. And I, as Dr. Baker said, I recently met with the Roy Cloud community and plan to meet with each staff member one-on-one to get to know them better as well as I begin to join that team officially at the end of July, early August. So I just wanted to thank you for your time and if anyone has any questions.
Any comments or questions?
Lisa here.
Oh, go ahead, Lisa. You can start, yeah.
Oh, okay. Up on the screen for you guys. Melissa, I just wanted to say how happy I am that you're coming to our district, and I got a chance to meet her. Was it just last week?
Last week on Wednesday.
One day blending into the next. Yeah, and actually, Dr. Baker, Melissa and I, and a few others, we were over at Clifford at the NUA program, and it was great to see Melissa already engaging in our equity work and excited about that. And she already knows some of the folks in our district because she had worked in Big Lift. So I just know that you're going to be so successful here and really bring your talents and skills and and I think your love and passion for the profession to Roy Cloud, to the community. And I also see you as not only working with Roy Cloud, students and families and staff, but also being a contributing member to the whole district. Really looking forward to, to working with you. So, so welcome.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, I just wanted to say welcome as well. I didn't have a chance to meet you until tonight. So I was very impressed with everything that I've heard so far. Sounds like it's a great fit. I'm really glad that you had that experience with the Big Lift that, that set you on a course that brought you here, and I'm looking forward to seeing what, what good things come.
Thank you.
I just want to say welcome also. I think everybody that I've talked to that has met you already is super enthusiastic about you coming to Redwood City. And apparently moving to Redwood City too. So welcome. Just glad to have you on board. So thanks for being here.
Thank you.
And same here. Welcome to Redwood City. Looking forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Well, thank you for that. And as someone who also worked on the Big Lift, I know how exciting that can be and what a challenge it can be. Welcome to our district. Thank you for giving us a chance and for coming to work with our students and our staff.
Thank you. It's truly my pleasure.
Melissa, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the board meeting, or you can leave. Also, it's entirely up to you. Thanks again, Melissa. Next.
8.4?
No, I have one more, one more. Rick Edson. Rick Edson is going to take the place of our wonderful CBO, which we, which I know Rick is going to become that also. But as Priscilla retires, he is now going to capture the reins for that position in the district. And a little many, let me see, there's one, two, three of you who have already met him because I think both Janet and Cecilia were on the first rounds of interviews with Wendy and Liz and some other members. And then Maria and I had the final interview with Rick. And I just want to say, Rick, thank you so much for choosing Redwood City. He has been the deputy superintendent slash CBO for Santa Rosa School District. And he lives in San Mateo Foster City, as I've told you all, because y'all know this story, because we meet and we talk. And Rick has almost a, just about a two-hour commute each way, right? And he won't have that anymore. He was so pleased when he, when we met, when we met and determined that it was a great fit for Redwood City School District, that his commute will be a lot less, and he'll be able to spend more time with his children, and also his wonderful wife who's here with us tonight also. And it's just a great pleasure to have you come and be part of the administrative team here in the Redwood City School District.
Before you start, would you like to introduce us to your family? They play a big part in supporting our employees. And I personally always am very grateful that they share their time, because many times you will be over here with us, and that they also contribute to the district. So if you could bring them over and introduce them.
Absolutely. So this is my daughter Juliette, who's in the third grade, eight years old. And this little guy kind of is Rick the Third, who is turning four on Friday. And then in the back, standing now is my wife, Jamie. And I will concur. One of the reasons that I'm excited is the lack of commute. But certainly, there's other reasons why I'm excited for working in Redwood City School District as well. So I will just take a moment to say thank you. I'm very excited about the opportunity. I very much appreciate the interview process and how that transpired. I'm super excited to be working in the district, serving the students that Redwood City School District does, and trying to create better opportunities for them from the business office perspective. One of the questions I was asked is what is the role of business services in one of the interviews? And I said it's to remove hope, right, in terms of I hope something works when a teacher walks onto campus. That they have the expectation that things are going to work. And it doesn't necessarily mean it'll be perfect every day. But certainly, the thought shouldn't be, is something going to work today? And using the resources from business services through all facets of the organization that are not in the classroom. Our duty is to make teaching the number one priority of the classroom, and not worrying about leaking roofs or technology or any of that. So that's one of the big goals and missions that I bring, along with the experience that I've garnered in Santa Rosa City Schools, as Dr. Baker mentioned, as deputy superintendent overseeing, it felt like just about everything other than ed services at times. So I am truly excited. The commute is the icing on the cake, right? But being able to be part of this district and carry the work that's already happening forward, I'm super excited. And I sincerely thank all of you for the opportunity.
Comments or questions? Lisa?
Sure, I was gonna let someone else go first. Yes, again, hey, welcome so much to our district, and I'm so happy that we got to meet your family. I didn't get to see your wife, but your kids are delightful. I can already tell we have up and coming educators, or lawyers, or engineers, or teachers in the midst. So that's just great. So welcome to our district. I haven't had a chance to meet you, but I know we'll be working closely with you, and I'm really happy that you chose Redwood City. We're a community with heart and soul, and I'm sure you'll get to know us quite well as soon as you're starting here. So thank you so much for choosing us.
Thank you.
Yeah, welcome. You know, and also thank you for choosing Redwood City. It sounded like when Dr. Baker, I haven't had a chance to meet you either. So when Dr. Baker had you know, introduced that you were the candidate that was coming in, it sounded like you had you know, had many of the experiences that we'd want to see in, in, at, at the head of the CBO. So I'm excited that you're bringing that vast experience that you brought, that you got at Santa Rosa. And you're bringing it here to help continue the, all the work that we're trying to do here in Redwood City. Thanks.
So welcome, Rick. You know, I sat on the panel, but we didn't get to interact much. It was, I was just listening. So I just want to say one of the things that really impressed on me when you were answering the questions, as you being from the peninsula, how many times you referred to Redwood City students and peninsula students as our students? It was clear that you already feel connected to the students here and that you care very much about them. So really happy to have you here. And I just want to say to Ricky and Juliette, I'm really excited that your dad is coming to Redwood City for you guys, so that you get to spend more time with him during the week. And I think that's going to be really great for you guys. And Jamie, too.
Thank you.
And again, welcome to Redwood City. I actually work with the CBO in our neighboring district for the Sequoia Union High School District. So I do appreciate, and I obviously know what hard work goes into your job. So again, welcome for coming to Redwood City and helping our community.
And I would just echo those sentiments. Thank you for bringing your family this evening. I do enjoy meeting the families, especially the children. And as my colleague said, I'm glad that you won't have to drive those long hours, and you can spend them hopefully with your family. Thank you for choosing us.
Thank you so much, Rick. And so we will be in touch soon. If you could, after the board approves the contract, move forward and just sign it and scan it and get it back to me. And then I will sign it, and then I'll scan a copy to you also. All right? Thank you so much. And thank you, guys, for coming. And also, Jamie, thank you so much. It was nice meeting you. Now, he's got to go back home and get online. There's a board meeting going, going on that started in close session at 5:00.
So moving on to 8.4.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the contract. Second.
Roll call, Ellie.
Trustee McAvoy.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Lawson.
Aye.
Vice President Marcus.
Aye.
President Diaz-Locum.
Aye. Okay, bond program consent items. Can I have a motion to move 6.1 to 6.12?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Roll call, Ellie.
Trustee McAvoy.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Lawson.
Aye.
Vice President Marcus.
Aye.
President Diaz-Locum.
Aye. We have no pro, bond program action items this evening, so that takes care of seven. And moving on to eight, the consent items, which covers 8.1, 8.2, 3. We just did four, and items 9.7, 9.8, 9.9, 9.10, 9.11, 9.12, and 9.13. Can I have a motion to move those items?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, Ellie.
Trustee McAvoy.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Lawson.
Aye.
Vice President Marcus.
Aye.
President Diaz-Locum.
Aye. Moving on to action items, 9.1, recommendation regarding classification of classified employees.
Thank you. We're bringing forward to you tonight a reclassification opportunity for the board to consider and hopefully approve. The reclassification process is a time period in which the district and CSCA meet together as a panel to review applications that either the district brings forward or members bring forward for consideration. Primarily around a wage analysis or change of job description of some kind. And after a thorough review and a multi-step process, and the superintendent's approval is brought to the board for consideration as well. So in this case, we have three items. The bus driver reclassification for increase from grade 23 to 25 based on wages, so wage comparability study. Also, the position of food service assistant. So these are individuals that work in our kitchens was reclassified from grade 18.2 to grade 20 based on wage comparisons. And then the instructional assistants. We have no changes in wages at this time. However, we are looking for movement over time, and it started with changing terminology, but with the hopes that we'll have even further movement as we progress along. Possibly with a change in job description and/or a new wage study. However, with the recent eight, 4% increase for 2021 and 4% increase for 2122, the now hopefully paraeducators, formerly instructional assistants, are actually in appropriate alignment with our neighboring comparable districts. So the financial impact is outlined below. Thank you to the business office, and thank you so much to the reclassification panel that met multiple times, especially with three groups to consider. I'd like to thank them for their hard work. And so I'm seeking approval tonight for this reclassification of these three classifications.
Any comments or questions?
So my comment is, again, I appreciate the assistance of everybody that was involved in the reclassification. As a classified employee myself, I do, you know, appreciate that. And so if nobody else has any comments.
So thank you, Wendy, for that. I am happy to hear that there's some movement on the instructional assistant issue. I saw that some of our districts in Santa Clara County are offering $1,000 for signing up employees. So I know how hard it is to find employees, especially those that have experience. So thank you for working on that. I do appreciate your efforts, and I look forward to a positive resolution to this particular issue with the instructional assistants and sped. With that, can I have a motion to move this item?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, Ellie.
Trustee McAvoy.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Lawson.
Aye.
Vice President Marcus.
Aye.
President Diaz-Locum.
Aye. 9.2, recommendation regarding approval of personnel changes for 2021, 2022.
The facilities department is requesting a one-hour increase of our mechanic for two purposes. One, we have new electric vehicles, which is, brings a whole new world to us. And interestingly enough, new maintenance concerns, you know, that as we transition and so forth. But also the realization that the hours in the morning are neat, an increase is needed to span when the vehicles return back to the yard and then are deployed out again. So when there's some work that needs to be done, that one hour would really assist the department.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Can I have a motion to move this item?
So moved.
Second.
Ellie?
Trustee McAvoy.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Lawson.
Aye.
Vice President Marcus.
Aye.
President Diaz-Locum.
Aye. 9.3, recommendation regarding approval of C-Best waiver for substitute teachers for 2022 to 2023.
Thank you. The, this item and the next item, 9.4, is a proactive approach for human resources to anticipate the need to execute the waiver system that California offers for, in this case, substitute teachers. So when we have an opportunity to hire a substitute teacher, and of course, train them and get them in the classroom, we want to enable all opportunities. So some individuals may have taken the C-Best, and some need, you know, a period of time or a couple of weeks or what have you to span that criteria. So this approval will allow human resources more flexibility within the scope of the California teaching credential process to be able to move accordingly. So this is for the 22, 23 school year in anticipation.
Any comments or questions on this item? Hearing none. Can I have a motion to move this item?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, Ellie.
Trustee McAvoy.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Lawson.
Aye.
Vice President Marcus.
Aye.
President Diaz-Locum.
Aye. 9.4, recommendation regarding approval of declaration of need for 2022 to 2023. Do we have any comments or questions on this item? Okay, can I have a motion to move this item?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Ellie.
Trustee McAvoy.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Lawson.
Aye.
Vice President Marcus.
Aye.
President Diaz-Locum.
Aye. 9.5, recommendation regarding approval of expanded learning opportunity program grant.
Oh, here we are with another plan. And I want to, you know, give Liz and her team kudos for meeting and putting this plan together and for also developing it with our outside partners. And I noticed that some of them are some guests tonight. So Liz can definitely give us more information regarding our partners, but this is a really big lift. It's a really big lift for our school district. And I know we're receiving dollars for our students to expand the day in which they attend. So they're actually in school like nine hours as opposed to six. So it's going to be exciting to see this move forward and to see all the fruits of your labor of working with our partners and that coming to a point where we'll get to see our kids actually receiving some beneficial extra time at school. So especially for unduplicated services kids. So Liz, I'm going to let you take it from here. You know, you all had the, you all had a plan, right? And then from the plan, the slides were shared with, with everyone. And so I think the slides are very self-explanatory, and they're great. So thank you.
Thank you. So I'm going to go ahead and surprise, surprise, I'm going to
Thank you. So I'm going to go ahead and surprise, surprise, I'm going to share my screen and show the slides.
There we go.
And I really, as, as John said, this would not have happened without the support and hard work of the partners. And particularly Michelle Griffith, who oversees the partners and the ACES in the twenty-first century, because this is meant to be kind of married with, with that, with those grants as well. And then we have on the line tonight, we've got our Reach and our PAL, and I believe our Boys and Girls Club is going to try to join as well. And then we have a person who has helped us do a lot of the writing, who we've also invited. I don't know if she's on yet, but I'll be talking about all of them in just a few minutes. But this really was a collaboration of many hours of trying to figure this out because as you probably know, as these plans come out, and this is like the tenth in a series of a hundred of plans this year, they come out without a lot of guidance and information, and the guidance and information unfolds as you're working on it. So as we continue to hit guidance from the CDE and guidance from Region Four, their expanded learning opportunity office, we, we couldn't have done it without all of this extra help. And as it is, as you saw in the slides, we're still only in phase one because phase two is next year with a tremendous amount more financial support to make it a much larger program. So we'll go through a little bit of this information right now in terms of what, what we know and what we have figured out based on what the information is at this time. And so this is this expanded learning opportunity grant plan, not to be confused with the expanded learning opportunity grant that came out last year. And so they're, they've got the same name, but they're two different grants. And so this is the one that has plan at the end of it. So what this is meant to do, which is different from the expanded learning opportunities grant that we worked on last year, is, as John said, to extend the day ultimately for all students in the school district so that all students in the school district have access to kind of wraparound care until five o'clock in, in the evening, if they want it, right? And so this is an option. But where we are starting is we're starting with the high priority schools and the unduplicated pupils because we don't have the full funding to be able to offer it or the partnerships to offer to all the students in the school district. So by law, what expanded learning means is it can be before school time or after school time, includes summer and intercession. So it's also more days. So not only is it more time, but it's more days that provide academic, social, emotional, physical supports as well as enrichment. And so I know this has been a big priority of the board. And so there's, for all this is a, another plan, it's all good, right? Because what it is offering is more opportunities for kids to be on campus longer with more services and more enrichment paid for by the CDE. So if I can go. So again, at this time, the intent is that all local education agencies offer the unduplicated pupils, that we start with the prioritization of the unduplicated pupils. And for everyone to, to know, those are our English learners, our low income, and our foster youth are called unduplicated pupils, and it's a term that comes from the LCAP to provide them with comprehensive after-school and intercession programs. And that this plan does need to be approved by the board. This is one of the few plans that does not go anyplace else after here. It goes onto our website. It doesn't go to the county for approval. It doesn't go to the CDE for approval. And in fact, this year isn't being audited. So it's really, this is just the beginning of this. All of that will probably change in the future. But right now, the intent was to get a plan started so that we could start to provide these services. None of these services could be provided to students until the plan is approved by you. So the basics are that we offer nine hours of instructional time. Again, it could start a little bit before school. It could go until five o'clock after school to all of our unduplicated pupils. And that in addition to the hundred and seventy-five days, we have thirty non-school days, right? The intercession days. And so for that reason, we have a six-week summer school this year, right? Because it is, and those are still only twenty-eight days because of the holidays. And so we'll need to see how we can provide two additional intercession days, possibly that Thanksgiving week or something. We can figure that out. Because we do need to provide thirty days, and there will be the funding to do that. And that in addition, one of the requirements, because this is also merging with the TK pre-K plan that will be coming to you next month, that we need to follow the guidelines in terms of staffing ratios and that it'd be a ten-to-one staffing ratio with TK and K. And so there's a lot of things that we've been trying to hammer out with our, with our partners, because all of this has an impact on hiring staff. So what we did is we started off with determining who were the unduplicated pupils this year at each of our school sites. And so this is the number of, of students by school based on whether they're homeless, EL, free and reduced lunch. And then the unduplicated count at each of the school sites. And there are some students that meet more than one of the criteria. And so this is, the last column here shows the students who meet all three, but there's many more students who meet two of the criteria, right? Our EL and free and reduced lunch often are, are fairly conflated. And then the information for anyone who's interested, there's a link on the spreadsheet that also has this information by grade level for school. So, I don't know why I said that. So this is the information then that we know in terms of funding. So this year, we have received two million, one hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. It has not been spent yet because the plan has not been approved. And this funding, because across the state, everyone is trying to figure out this grant. This funding is allowed to be carried over to next year, and it won't be an issue with the auditors or anything. And so we will start using some of this funding to cover the extra two weeks of summer school this year because the amount that was allocated for summer school doesn't cover all of it because it's more time, it's more teachers, more counselors, more, more curriculum, more oversight and all of that. So part of that money will go for that, and the rest of that will then be kind of folded into what we do for next year. And what we've been, we haven't received it yet, but we, you can see on the website that there is another, an additional, almost six and a half million dollars that will be allocated for next year. And so next year, the expectation is that we really expand our, our support to, to more students as well, of course, is it's going to be far more than the extra two weeks of summer school. It'll be every day over the school year and then the, the upcoming intercessions. And so a lot of our conversations with our partners have been, how do we allocate funding? Do they have the capacity to provide funding, to provide services for a hundred percent of our unduplicated pupils? And if not, and most likely not, what other partners can we bring in to, to provide this? And one of the conversations we've had with the sites is that the days of not using every classroom at your school site for an after-school program are coming to an end. There aren't a lot of portables or extra rooms, or all of these students are not going to be able to be served in a couple of extra buildings that might be on campus. And so classrooms will need to be used for the after-school program to keep students, give them opportunities until five o'clock. And so again, this will take some time to determine and to roll out and to hire people and to bring people into this work. But this, we are, we're starting that planning now. For this year, what our expectation was for the grant was to provide access to fifty percent of our unduplicated pupils. Now, of that amount, of that fifteen hundred ninety-seven students, about four hundred of them are currently being served in our ACES after-school programs already. But that still meant eleven hundred something kids to add to that, right? And so again, we didn't have to do that this year because of this, this rollover. But next year, the expectations, we get up to a hundred percent of our kids. And this year, to, to provide access meant to send out a survey and let people know about it. And so we did that, and, and information is coming up on, on who said that they would be interested. But we only sent it to the high priority sites with, with the unduplicated, high priority, unduplicated pupils. We will be sending out another survey probably in late July, early August, as people are starting to come back and be prepared and think about school again to all of our unduplicated pupils to ask, do you want to stay at school until five o'clock? And on every day, because there's a lot of possibilities for students. Do they want to stay every day? Do they want to stay a couple of days a week? Do they want to leave at three o'clock? Would they prefer before? You know, there's just a lot of logistics to have to figure out. And so we are going to start to gather that information so that our partners can start to do their planning. But as you can imagine, this is time-consuming and, and, and not, not that easy to figure out, but they're all in it. They're all trying to figure this out, and they, they've been amazing. So the other component too is that once the unduplicated pupils are served, then we can open up to all the students because the unduplicated pupils are the priority. But ultimately, the plan is that all students who want to have access to this before and after-school care have that access. So that's, that's coming as well. So what we did this year in phase one is we determined our priority sites. And it is at this time that the priority not only is at the unduplicated pupils, but it's the grade levels TK through six. It doesn't include seventh and eighth grade at this time as a priority. Right? So these were the numbers again at, at our school sites. So we determined that schools one through nine would be invited, and so they received invitation, or at least information about the program. And again, will be invited again for next year. And then these were the results of our interest survey that we sent out. At this time, there were three hundred and thirty-four families that were interested. All right. And then under sixty-nine interested, and then of the people that we sent the information to, a hundred and seven were already being served. So we didn't hear back from everybody, but we sent it out to everyone, and this is what we received by the time of the, there may have been a few more that have come in since. So in planning for this, we had multiple meetings with the Boys and Girls Club of the Peninsula, the city of Palo Alto, or City of Redwood City, and the Police Activities League, who are our current partners right now. And so we were meeting with them weekly and in some cases more often than that to try to, try to make sense of it and how would we, what would the schedules look like? Because in addition to serving more students, there also is an expectation that we serve students with special needs. And the students with special needs, many of them have one-on-one aides, or they might have a nurse. And so how do we pay for that? And so, but again, everyone is all in trying to figure this out. And so we're, we're working on that with them and, and who would do the hiring of that? Would it be the Redwood City School District? Would it be Boys and Girls Club, who would, and Reach that would hire additional people? And the, the partners right now are looking at how would they do the hiring? And so they're wanting to take that on for themselves. Then we met with the Alameda County Office of Ed, as I said, which is our Region Four, and then the CDE, we have the cellphone of the, the person who works at the CDE and the Expanded Learning Division, who would answer our questions every day. So as I mentioned, we have our summer school plans and that this is the extension of the day in summer school until five o'clock and then the extension of two additional weeks. And then for our school year program, again, we sent, we will be sending a new interest survey, as I mentioned, including the mod severe special ed students, hiring the one-on-one aides as necessary. TK students who are also expected to be included and invited into staying until five o'clock. We are working with our Cal State preschool as the, the best place for the little guys to have a place to go until five o'clock. And so space will be, and you'll see this in the UPK, UTK plan that will be coming forward next month. Space will be saved in the state preschools for the TK students. And so we, in the afternoon program. So we are working with the TK schedules for next year to end at around one thirty, one forty-five or so, and they will be walked to the preschool programs at their sites where they will be, they will have been enrolled in the pre-K program, and they will be able to stay until five o'clock. And so we are working with the pre-K right now to work on the hours because that requires some changes as well in terms of their current hours of, of employment. We're also opening up right now, the sites that are being served are Garfield, Taft, Hoover. Reach is at Adelante Selby and Henry Ford. And PAL is working at Garfield and Taft and Hoover. And so now we're also looking to see how we can expand to other schools. So not only additional students, but other school sites. And so what that will most likely require is additional partnerships. And so there are some samples here of the kinds of schedules that they are proposing from the Boys and Girls Club, from Reach and from PAL that show the combination of enrichment and sports and some homework help. Snacks are required, you know, so all of that is being taken into consideration. These are just some sample schedules. And then we have started to think about who might be some of our additional partners. And we have not started to meet with them yet. So if any of them are watching this or thinking, oh, no, I don't even know anything about this yet. And so we will start to be doing that as well. We, we start to get back the information about the numbers of students who are interested, the days that they're interested and all of that kind of information, and we'll be sorting all of that out. So that's just a list of the, the current partnerships that are on the school sites that could also possibly be added to this grant and receive some of the funding, some of the funding to support that. But these are the people here, many of whom are on this call. If you have some questions, who we have to really thank because we have spent so much time together trying to figure this out. And of course, it's Michelle, who has the connection already with the after-school programs and the ACES and Twenty-First Century Grants and an amazing relationship with all of them in, in helping them plan. Isette Hernandez, who is our community schools coordinator at Garfield, is one of the major writers of this grant that you saw because the, the grant components are aligned with the ACES grants. And so I don't know if you've seen the ACES grant, but it's very much based on the quality control principles of expanded learning opportunities. And so she took what had been written for the ACES grant and modified that and adjusted that and did a lot of support for the many pages that you saw that showed the, the steps that everybody would take in order to meet those quality criteria. So huge thank you to Lisa. And then we've got Lupi Ortiz from the Boys and Girls Club, who again, met with us on a very regular basis. Adila and Jody from the city of Pal, of City of Redwood City. I kept going to say Palo Alto because PAL is written right on the next line. And then Ivan Martinez and Enrique Calderon from Police Activities League were just also very flexible and knowing that every time we met, we had different information and things changed. And we tried to figure out the funding and trying to plan for next year, and they had a lot of patience with us as we, as we figured this out. So some of them are on the line. If you've got questions for them or if you have any questions for me.
Questions, comments?
I have comments and one question. I could go, or if someone else wants to go, I'm happy to wait. It's hard for me to see everybody's heads if somebody's ready to go.
Go ahead.
Okay. Well, first of all, thank you, Liz, and thank you to all of our Redwood City District staff, as well as all of our partners. It's pretty clear that a lot of thought went into this, and I am personally so excited about this program and grateful for the funding because it's something we've talked about wanting to do for a long time, right? To really provide before and after-school care, provide enrichment, help our, you know, it's going to be so much more family-friendly and really helping our working parents and family members who, you know, want a enriching place for their children to be while they're working. And what a great set of, you know, exciting things for the kids to do and good nutrition and all of that. So anyway, just thank you so much. Oh, and then the other thing I was thinking is that I think just some of the enrichment and the further connections may also help with some of the mental health and social emotional sorts of things we've been talking about. So just, I mean, I'm just really, really excited about it. So the one question I had was, is this just a two-year grant opportunity or is it, do we get any sense this is going to be ongoing?
So that's the question, right? And so no one has said anything for sure about the future. But what we've been given every indication of is that this is an ongoing funding source because this is a very important topic for our governor to, and the advocacy that he's received, as well as I think his own personal needs. have really led him to want to provide more, you know, it's part of that whole package of also bringing school down the age levels, right? So that TK, younger kids are going to TK and younger kids will be going to preschool because of the enhanced learning opportunities for kids. And this will also enhance their, not only their learning and their enrichment opportunities, but it helps out the working families, right? And so these are things that I think are high priority for the governor and the legislature at this time. And so for the foreseeable future, I think we're good to go. I don't know much beyond, you know, if we get a new governor who doesn't care too much about these topics, things could change. But I think there's a lot of commitment in the legislature from what I understand about this as well. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, this is exciting. I really liked reading the plan. Eleven detailed sections and a part that I really, it felt very tightly coupled with the school day. Like it really is an extension of the school day and not not just a program that's run in addition to school. And I thought that was, that was really great to see. The inclusiveness in it too, particularly not just going for all unduplicated students, but actually talking about how IEPs are going to transfer over needs for, you know, students that need, say, an IA. I know maybe the funding still has to be figured out, but that was, you know, and even just talking about how the programming is going to adapt so that, you know, for our English language, you know, our students that are still learning English, they're not going to feel excluded from activities because we'll be sure to, you know, that everything will kind of match in there. I'm sure many of our partners are already doing those kinds of things, but to see that in the plan and included and kind of coordinated with the students' experience during the school day, you know, that was great. Maybe it's happening everywhere, but it's nice to see it sort of codified in the plan. Can I, I just want to ask real fast about the survey. The results that you put up there were from the interest survey from the one for this school year, right? Okay, yeah, that's what I wanted to say. And then is there more outreach than just the survey? Or is that the only outreach to see to gain interest?
So there wasn't this year because that was the minimum we had to do. And so that was all we could figure out how to do.
Yeah.
But so for going forward, there will be, we'll be working with the partners to see how that works because the partners also do their own outreach, right? So they already have students who are involved. And so we'll figure out ways to do, in addition to our own survey, you know, how can we also partner up with their ways that they've already found to be effective in recruitment?
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. Well, yeah, no, I think that this is great. I hope the funding continues and that we're able to continue offering these, you know, the continuation that so many of the students need, so many families need to be able to, you know, have, be able to meet everything that they have going on in their lives. So thank you, thank Michelle, Lizette for writing, of course, our partners, Reach, PAL, BGCQ, you know, all of it's wonderful. And I'm looking forward to seeing an additional slideshow showing more students like the one that we saw earlier this school year.
I don't, I didn't have any questions, but I just want to say thank you. This is going to be, I'm looking forward to seeing it roll out. I think it's going to be great for our students and the families that especially need the after school care later into the day. Thank you to the partners and everybody who worked on the grant and the plan. And Liz, I mean, how many of these have you written now? They're always so clear and easy to understand and I appreciate all the work that you put into them. And that's all. Thank you.
And same here, thank you to you and your team. I want to say thanks to the partners for their collaboration with the district and definitely their employees for their dedication to the Redwood City School Kids, Children. And then my only question is when you talked about like the summer timeframe, and then I forget if you said two days or two weeks and you mentioned like the Thanksgiving week perhaps. I'm wondering, is that going to be something where it's going to be a mandatory attendance for those school, I'm sorry, for those children that attend summer school to then attend those again, two days during, I mean, I guess, you know, Thanksgiving. I'm not sure if that's already a given.
Right. Thank you for asking that. So no, it won't be mandatory attendance. What we need to do is offer 30 extra days. And then, so because of the two holidays in summer school, we have to make up two more days. But if we can offer those two days, and we actually don't have any plans on how to do that yet. But once we figure that out, it will probably not be like a summer school program. It won't have any Redwood City teachers teaching that. It will probably, we'll be able to pay for like a camp, a two-day camp for the kids who would like to go to that. Right? So it'd be something completely separate from what summer school was. And we can decide to do it over Thanksgiving, over the winter break, over the spring break, over the President's Holiday, you know, and we could add more days to it also. I mean, that's what that funding is for. It's a minimum of 30 more, 30 days, and we're only coming up with 28 this summer. So it's, it's pretty open how we do those last two days or more, if you want to do more.
Thank you.
Well, I would echo my colleague's sentiments and Liz. I want to say once again, thank you for coming back to Redwood City. I just, I love all the work that you do. And I know that you work tirelessly and I am eternally grateful. Thank you for all you do, also for our partners who have collaborated with us throughout the years and continue to do so. I am excited also to see the additional partners that you're going to bring back and hopefully expand the opportunities to the different sites. I've heard over the years, you know, the need for before and after. And we've tried different times to do it. But looking at next year and seeing the sites that you will be adding and the student numbers, it's really exciting to see that many of the children and the families who didn't have those opportunities before will now have that. So thank you to everybody for working together. And, you know, it's the saying, it takes a village, well, really, it takes a big group. So thank you to everybody that's worked on this. And I'm looking forward to seeing them all roll out and continue, I hope. And with that, can I have a motion to move this item?
Someone?
Second.
Roll call, Ellie?
Trustee McAvoy?
Aye.
Trustee Wells?
Aye.
Trissy Lawson?
Aye.
Vice President Maricas?
Aye.
President Diaz-Solcom?
Aye. Moving on to 9.6, Recommendation Regarding of Adoption of Resolution 32, Authorizing the Establishment of Fund 08 Students' Activity Special Revenue Fund.
Thank you. Good evening. This resolution is needed for the district to comply with the new reporting requirement for associated student body activities. So in the past, it's not a requirement. It's optional for the district to record the student body activities to the district books. But now it became mandatory. So we either recorded in Fund 01 or Fund 08. But the auditor has also recommended that we create Fund 08 to be able to track it and not co-mingle it with the general fund activities.
Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none. Can I have a motion to move this item?
So moved.
Second. I'll second it, Mike. You can have the motion.
It's roll call, Ellie?
Trustee McAvoy?
Aye.
Trustee Wells?
Aye.
Trustee Lawson?
Aye.
Vice President Maricas?
Aye.
President Diaz-Solcom?
Aye. Moving on to 10.1. Cecilia, would you like to start? It's okay, we can come back to you.
Yeah, please.
Okay, Mike?
Sure. So we had a Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, Matt. Yeah, I think an announcement went out or maybe not about new members. But anyways, we'll see that coming up. We all saw, to help you out, we all saw the mariachi performance at MIT, all the board members and some of the staff. So that was awesome, so much fun to see the music program and the reach that it has across the district there. Beginning of the music program, I went to the Kennedy Middle School Spring Concert that same night. Full disclosure, I was a parent, so, but I still thought I'd mention it there. I visited, I got to visit Roosevelt and Garfield and tour around with the principals. So thank you, Tina and Lupe, for spending a little bit of your mornings with me and showing me all the amazing things and some of the challenges that are going on at all the school sites there. And I hope to be able to continue those in May. But, you know, working around state testing and things of that nature.
Okay.
I think I have added in a site visit, I have a lot of the same stuff as Mike. The mariachi was awesome, really enjoyed that. And then I too went to the Kennedy Spring Concert as a parent and enjoyed that very much. And then the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee meeting. The only thing I have to add that I did was we had a workforce housing slash bond team meeting. And I think that's all I've done.
And then same for the mariachi. What I appreciated was they actually taught the students the different types of music. What do you call it, like the notes? Something that I actually just learned as a matter of fact as I was there. So that I really appreciate. And then the fact that the students got to actually play a piece with the mariachi. And so I was really pleased with that. And then my other, my other item was I attended the Superintendent Advisory Committee.
I forgot to mention that LCAP planning started. So planning season is ongoing all the time. Yeah. I had missed part of the beginning of it, so I had forgotten to write that down, but yeah.
Elisa?
Yeah. Yeah, I know everybody mentioned the mariachi music, but I just want to say kudos to the district for getting that going. It was just so exciting and the music teachers did a great job. And the mariachi band was just so much fun and I think really inspiring for the kids. And I know some of us, some of us were saying that, you know, with the number of students who were there, I'm sure there's a handful that this will be one of those days that have, have reset their trajectory for their life in terms of just eye-opening, you know, what opportunities might be around music or the arts. And those guys did a great job of kind of educating the kids. That was really wonderful. I did go to the San Mateo County School Boards Association meeting, which was last Monday night and/or two Monday nights ago. And we heard from Jefferson Union High School District about their workforce housing. They're actually having their ribbon cutting on Friday, May 13th, which will be the same date as this year's annual mixer for the San Mateo County School Boards Association, where the Kent Awards will be given out. It's going to be a little bit different than past years, but there'll be an opportunity to tour their workforce housing. So if any of you are interested in that, certainly look out for the announcement coming from the San Mateo County School Boards Association. I know I want to go up there and check out what they've done. I think it'll be inspirational for us as we think about what we're doing here in Redwood City. And we also heard from Ravenswood, from the superintendent there, who I know Dr. Baker must work with quite a bit. She is amazing. This is the first opportunity I had to really hear from her. And she talked about the teacher evaluation process that they're doing there. And it's, it's pretty elaborate and I'm sure Wendy and John that you've been hearing about that. So I think it's something that we ought to think about in terms of, you know, are there some things there that they're doing that we could learn from and maybe bring to our district? And they're going to be doing, it's kind of a more robust teacher evaluation with some merit-based aspects to it moving forward. So definitely different than I think what anyone else is doing in San Mateo County right now. There are some other districts, you know, in the Bay Area that are doing this. But anyway, that was inspiring to hear about. And it was a very collaborative effort with their teachers' union to come up with this, by the way. And then the last trip we heard about was teacher residency, which we already talked about that as the board. So I won't go into that. I did have a call with Senator Weiner. That was just part of the CSBA Action Day that happened a week or two later. And he seemed pretty supportive of the different things we were talking about. I did go out to Clifford, NUA, that's where I got to meet Melissa. What a great day. And of course, I know the rest of you have already seen it, so I won't go into detail there, but super inspiring. In addition to the housing meeting that Janet talked about, I did meet with Peter Ingram, our consultant and with the city planner and the city housing person. And so we haven't, John, I can't remember if you came to some of that or not. I think you got called away to something else, if I remember.
You're correct. I wasn't able to attend.
Yeah, 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 yeah. We've had so many meetings, I couldn't remember if that was when you were out or not. But basically, we were talking to them about our plan and maybe some ideas that we have that the board already knows about. And they were certainly open to that. And we had some questions they're going to be getting back to us on. And so I know that we'll be having a closed session coming up. John, do you remember what day we decided to do that? I, anyway, we don't, we can talk about it when we get to the calendar meeting, but I know that that'll be coming up, I think, in the next month or so, just to get everybody on the same page. And then more open sessions, of course, as well. And then finally, I just want to mention that I am in Washington DC, as I know you all know, and been out here for the CSBA Advocacy Week, and it's been really extraordinary. We've got to meet with the Department of Education. Actually, the, I want to make sure I get this right. The, oh, the Federal Commission, the Federal Communications Commission, actually the chairwoman of that. And so we got to talk about E-Rate with her and the importance of that and some of the other things that they've been doing to help with our broadband and getting kids connected digitally. And then I did get an opportunity to meet with staff people today from Congresswoman Eschew's office and Congresswoman Jackie Spears' office. And then the rest of the state, all the congresspeople were being met with, with other people. And then there was lots of other things that I won't go into. But the one other group we did hear from was a national polling group with lots of good ideas about what parents and community members are thinking about with schools and different ways to talk about what we're doing that might be helpful for us. So I'll be sending that out to everybody, that particular PowerPoint as we move forward. And, and I'll be returning tomorrow after this board meeting. All right, that's it.
Well, I had similar events that I attended. But I once again want to say thank you to Liz and the teachers for bringing the mariachi educational program to our district. I think it's long overdue. I think it was a great experience for the students. And it was, Cecilia was mentioning, educational and really cultural pride by the way they were instructing them from, you know, this is not a Halloween costume and you should be proud and all that. And the different types of musics from the different regions and their mentoring, if I may, of the students. So I hope that the Sequoia High School District also follows up on that because I think, you know, we provide a lot of the students that go into that district. So I'm looking forward to seeing that expansion and hearing more from the students. And although I didn't attend the Kennedy Concert, I did get little bits and pieces from videos of proud parents and students. So it was very nice. John?
Yes, a lot of the items were already mentioned, but one I will particularly mention is the Superintendent's Advisory Committee, which was on Monday. And we had a presentation from the CNS Department. They did a really good presentation about the types of foods that we are offering. They also explained about the nutritional guidelines and so forth and what they're doing to move forward with more foods that are appetizing to students now that we're back in person. So I thought that was really great and we got some really good comments from parents that sit on the committee. So that was really good. And then the other piece is at the superintendent's meeting, and I know, Elisa, you asked this question. Is this for the Expanded Learning Opportunity Grant Plan, I should say? You asked about ongoing funding. There was a lot of talk about that at Friday's meeting. And even though not
Even though not all districts are doing an elaborate plan like we have, and they want to look at Liz's, and I said, I don't think Liz is going to share it. But. I said, get you. Just teasing, I said, get your assistant. Pay for it. They were concerned about the funding. Everybody was concerned about the funding. So. When we were talking to, when Nancy was there, and we also talked to Capitol Advisors, who are definitely the ones that are up in Sacramento. And move forward and lobby to really lobby to, because we're going through all the motions right now to create these plans, get kids to come to. These activities and then to all of a sudden for it to go away would be horrible. So those of us that are creating these, that have the unduplicated students and have the dollar amounts are creating these great plans. But I'd hate to see, you know, after. Big piece of money that comes next year, then after that, they start dwindling. And then parents are going to say, well, you had that, and we want to continue to do it. So. If CSBA can advocate, that would be perfect.
I will definitely be following up with them on this. That was an aha moment for me as I was reading through it today. And I I know we have had some conversations, but I'm sure it'll be on the. On the ticket for us to be talking about this next year. So so thank you.
That's what we talked about mainly at the superintendent's meeting on Friday, was that and then superintendents that are leaving and open positions and so forth. But 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 otherwise, I attended just about everything. The only other piece that you need to be aware of. Redwood City Together, the executive team meeting, we had that, our first one face-to-face, and not everybody was there. Amy couldn't come because Amy Grunstein from Stanford, she couldn't come because she was in a situation with dinner with a lot of people and. Out of the ten, four came down with COVID, so and she wasn't feeling good, so she was high-bread on the screen. So I wanted to let you know that I will be the co-chair for the executive team next year. So that'll move me in a position to kind of get some other things going that we want for Redwood City Together, so I took on that responsibility. It's, you know, it kind of rotates, but this year no one wanted it. So I said, I'll do it. I'll do it since. Last time I did it was seven years ago, so. Have the experience and working with Rafael, it will be a lot easier than previously. The person that was there. So that's, that's it for me.
Now, moving on to information, first one is eleven point one, contract update information and credit card summary. Are there any questions on that? No, hearing none. Eleven point two, Redwood City School District Review of Connect Community Charter's Second Interim Financial Report for Fiscal Year. Twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. Questions or comments on that?
No, the only comment I had was their enrollment is so low. Is that a hundred and fifty, and I think a hundred and forty-one of those are our students, if I understood the letter correctly. Anyway. I mean, it looks like they're still meeting their budget obligations and all of that, which is basically the review that we looked at, but. I think again, that was just sort of an aha for me, and I know we've struggled to to run small schools like that, so. It's just something I know we're all paying attention to. Yeah.
Right.
Okay, eleven point three, Redwood City School District's Review of KIP's Second Interim Financial Report for Fiscal Year. Twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. Any comments or questions on that? Okay. Eleven point four, Redwood City School District's Review of Rocketship Second Interim Financial Report for Fiscal Year. Twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. Comments or questions? None. Okay, eleven point five, information on San Mateo County Investment Fund. Questions or comments? Nope. Eleven point six, Quarterly Williams Report, third quarter, January twenty twenty-two through March twenty twenty-two. No comments or questions. Okay, moving on to correspondence, twelve point one.
I think we've all gotten some emails that are follow-ups on the North Star Forward.
Right, there was one that came in late this afternoon, which I want to bring to your attention because when we have our individual meetings, I want to talk to you about it. It came in like about. Around around five, five-thirty, somewhere around there. It's to all of us.
Haven't seen that yet. Yeah, we also, I got, I think Cecilia and I got a. Email from Jessica on Child Nutrition Services at a different district. I think that was it. Okay, thirteen point one, possible other business suggested items for future agendas.
Yes, so Elisa was talking about a. Closed session that we need to have, and that closed session was slated, it's going to be slated for. The first board meeting in May, which is the eleventh, the eleventh. Yeah, so that's when it will be. And at that time, we will have an update on not only. The workforce housing plan, but also the update from Joy regarding the bond and so forth. And also information that she has shared with us in regard to that communication going out to the community. So that will be on the, on the fourth, after the fourth, the eleven, I'm sorry.
Superintendent Baker, are we starting this closed session at sixteen?
Yeah, six fifteen.
Any others? Nope. Okay.
Um, I I just, I had a question on. So is the retirement recognition, is it now on May twenty-fifth? That's what the count, but I wasn't sure if it actually got changed.
Yes, so the last text message I sent to all the. Yeah. I confirm that we have changed the retirement celebration to May sixth, May twenty-sixth.
Okay, May twenty-fifth or twenty-sixth?
Twenty-sixth.
Okay.
It's a Thursday from four to six.
Oh, I see, you know, okay, so May twenty-fifth on the school board meeting is the retirement recognition, which is different. Um, I'm just looking at the count, the draft schedule of board meetings.
Right, but that, that's just a draft, that's just a draft. So we remember we we at the last board.
Oh, draft schedule. Okay, so we're not, don't, yeah, okay.
Right, at the last board meeting, we had some conflicts with the date.
Yeah, okay.
We changed it.
So it's, it's May twenty-sixth.
Right, and it went up vis-à-vis text, because I know.
Okay, yeah, I pro, I just, I missed it, so I apologize for that. And then is the, yeah, and then we got a separate annotation for the induction. I think what I'm confused about is it, so this is just a draft, so ignore.
Right.
Draft schedule of board. Okay, that's why I just wanted clarity.
Okay, good.
Okay, Board Agenda Calendar, do we have any changes to that schedule?
We do not, but I will make note of the May twenty-sixth retirement celebration on the next draft schedule of Board Agenda Items.
Thank you, Ellie.
And just before you go to adjournment, I forgot something. And it's nothing we're going to talk about or anything, so I'm fine with the Brown Act. I just wanted to mention that Evelyn Campos is here with us this evening. Evelyn works in the EL Department, and you all know. That we, Ellie will be leaving at the end of the school year, June thirtieth. And Evelyn has agreed to take the position. We've met this afternoon, this morning, and this morning, and so she will be. Attending board meetings. She's working closely with Ellie as Ellie trains her and. As I told Evelyn and I told HR, when she signs on the dotted line that she's taking a different position, we'll fly her position. And then yourself and Leslie can. You can't have her anymore, though. So you'll be seeing Evelyn with us. All right.
And before we adjourn, I'd like to say thank you once again for the tech team, for all your help this evening. And for Kyle to sending out the links and. I don't know if I mentioned, I think I saw that, by the way, Hor has been doing a great job with the communication, and I saw that he posted that Kyle got an award.
Yes, he did.
So congratulations to Kyle. And with that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Some of.
Second.
Roll call, Ellie. Trustee McAvoy.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Lawson.
Aye.
Vice President Maricas.
Hi.
President Diaz-Solcom.
Hi.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.